Call this meeting order, clerk color all.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
DePena.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Horry.
Here.
Councilwoman Robel will not be attending this evening. Councilwoman Strumelberg.
Present.
Mayor Melham.
Here. Sunshine.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, notice that this meeting is published in the December 18th issue of Star Ledger and in the December 20th issue of Double Times. A copy of this notice has a motion on the double Town Hall voting board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is a presentation. We're gonna skip the first presentation as I don't see the recipient here. So we're gonna go right to the second presentation. I believe Councilman Cazarelli is gonna take the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a special presentation for the Women's Club of Bellevue. They were recognized along with Marie Kimball for the 2019 Community Service Award from the Circle of Rainbow Sisters Seeking Spiritual Wellness Connection, which is a long name, but it's basically Coors. The name is, the initial stamp for Coors. So basically, what they do is, the Women's Club is very involved in helping abused women, which a lot of times you don't hear about because secrecy is a big part of that, where you can't really go blasting out to the public what you do and everything for these women because they wanna stay, they wanna stay private. They don't want people to know. They wanna be anonymous. But the work that the Women's Club does is spectacular. I know firsthand, and they were recognized last weekend, I believe it was, so we would like to recognize them ourselves. So Councilwoman DePena is going to read our proclamation. She has worked with this clause a lot herself, too. Yes. So I know we have a few people from the Women's Club here tonight, so if you guys could come up. I know the President's gonna be here. Oh, no, here she is. Okay, good, yeah. All right, good, good. Yeah, so we have Marta Kubler and Janice Gatto and Patty Wells. I think, is that it? I'm sorry. Ma'am, I don't know.
And this is Phyllis.
Oh, and Phyllis, thank you, Tony, of course, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, it says, "Resolved by the municipal council of Bellevue, whereas the Circle of Rainbow Sisters Spiritual Wellness Connection organization held its 2019 Abuse Women's Support Award luncheon and fundraiser and presented its community achievement award to Marie Kimball and the Women's Club of Bellevue for making a difference through support of domestic violence victims and charitable work for those in need in the community. And whereas the Women's Club of Bellevue has dedicated 50 years to good fellowship between women and its interest in things that render the members helpful to one another and useful to society, using its many fundraisers and projects to provide scholarships, donations to support others in need and has had great success in making a difference in support of domestic violence victims. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Bellevue wish to recognize and congratulate Marie Kimball and the Women's Club of Bellevue, who are recipients of the 2019 Community Achievement Award from the Circle of Rainbow Sisters Spiritual Wellness Connection. And thank you all for the pledge to offer future support to women in need. Thank you very much for the work you do."
You wanna say two words?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I was, I was personally at the function. It was a beautiful function. We really appreciate being awarded by that and you also. And the Presidents were there that, you know, that they voted on and. So, just thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So one more little fact about this next month, actually. Next month is National Homeless Awareness Month. And for women in particular, domestic violence is the number-one cause of homelessness. A lot of times, in the middle of the night, women have to leave their home. Police don't know about it. No one knows about it. They just leave, and then they're on the streets. So I just wanna thank the Women's Club. I know a lot of work you do is anonymous, but we appreciate it. Thank you.
We have a second presentation. I do not see the recipient here yet. So at this moment, I'm gonna entertain a motion to go into executive. Once we do so, unfortunately, we'll have to clear the chambers. Motion, please. We have a motion made, and second going to take this session to discuss consulting contract. Do I have a vote?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Horry.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Unfortunately, we do need to clear the courtroom at this moment. No action will be taken while we're in executive. So we invite it back in when the regular meetings resume. Just wanna remind everybody who's entered back into a live meeting. We're gonna give it a second for everybody to get settled in, and then we're gonna just continue with our meeting. So we have regained our meeting. We're gonna loop back to item four, which is presentation. We're gonna go back to presentation A, because he's no longer late. He's here. And B, I'm assuming he was in a parking space.
Somebody told me it was 6:30.
That's totally plausible, by the way. Totally plausible. So without further ado, we're gonna head back to item four in our agenda, presentations. We have Councilman Cazarelli has a presentation recognizing Frank for his community leadership, and I think he has a proclamation as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This past weekend was the annual 5K Breast Cancer Walk from the Michael Ross Common House Foundation. And it was the fifth annual, right, Frank? Fifth annual? And they raised a lot of money, and so far, they've given over $100,000 in scholarships. And also, a big portion of the money goes directly to families with breast cancer from Bellevue. So, yeah, we're very thankful. I'd also like to recognize his wife Sheila, who is a breast cancer survivor. She's here. So I'm gonna present this along with Councilman Graziano, which he's gonna read it. He doesn't know it yet, but he's gonna read it.
You've got glasses.
We both attended the 5K Walk, did you?
Right, walk, right. Doors locked, right?
Some went to all the way to finish.
Whereas the mayor and municipal council of the township of Bellevue wish to recognize and commend Frank Doutis' involvement in many charities and organizations in Bellevue. Whereas the mayor and council support the efforts of local small businesses and recognize the critical role they play in our community. For more than 10 years, Frank has been the second-generation owner of Michael's Ross Common House in Bellevue. A business started over 35 years ago by his mom Pam and his late father Michael. Frank enjoys his involvement in many charities and community organizations, notably the Michael's Ross Common House Foundation in honor of his late father Michael, from which over $100,000 in scholarships has been donated to local students. Frank and his wife Sheila created the Breast Cancer 5K Walk and Foundation to raise money to help local families dealing with cancer who are struggling to pay bills. Frank is a proud supporter of sports programs, including the Bellevue Little League, Bellevue High School Football, Wrestling, and Basketball, as well as various recreation programs throughout the town. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Bellevue recognize and thank Frank Doutis for his community leadership and involvement in many charities and organizations throughout Bellevue and wish him continued success at the small business. And now, Frank's gonna talk because he's a little bit of a crier, so I wanted to...
No, he's not gonna get me crying. Just the mayor and the rest of the town council, thank you. Anybody that was here at Ross Common for our 5K last week on Saturday, thank you very much for coming. And anybody who's donated money in the past five years. My wife and I created this five years ago. The town wanted to have some type of fundraiser for us, and we decided not to. We had good insurance, and we decided that there was many other people that needed money more than we did. And over the past year, if any mention that we raised over $100,000, that all comes from our golf outing in honor of my dad. And then, the Breast Cancer Walk has raised over $50,000. The scholarship golf outing has raised over $100,000 for the scholarship. So over $50,000, we've donated back to local breast cancer patients who are in need of help with medical bills. The money literally goes from one hand, like Tommy was in the walk, everybody, a lot of people were here, to us, right to their bills. They hand us over the bills, and we send the money. So there's no, you know, we were thinking about doing the Avon Walk and all this other stuff, but we decided to just send the money right towards the bill. So that's, that's basically, you know, it's not just us. It's thank everybody in the community who helps out, so, thank you.
Is that enough to meet Frank? Have you seen people that showed up on Saturday?
Yep.
What's that? No, that wasn't it.
Okay, so now we're gonna jump back ahead to item six, the approval of minutes.
No, at this time, ma'am.
No minute to this time. We have a report of the manager.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see so many new faces. And I certainly can never miss an opportunity to say hello to the judge. Was he here 30 seconds ago?
Yeah, she was.
You're gonna stand. You wanna use the mic?
Only because you're there. How's that better?
Yeah.
Okay. The judge was there. First, let me apologize about the heat. We have been working on this, believe it or not, since early this afternoon. It's beyond our control. Trust me, I wanna take my time. I knew there was so many people, I probably have a more exciting report, but I'll try to make, I'll try to make it work. This Saturday, for the first time, from what I'm told, we will have a Saturday Public Works Crew working in the streets of Bellevue. We did this.
Not overtime.
We did this all without overtime. We made some adjustments in work hours. So the advantages of having a small crew working on Saturday comes back tenfold. Certainly, we're gonna be concentrating on our business district, keeping it clean on a Saturday, because obviously, when we leave right now, when we leave on a Friday, whether it's trash up at the field or trash on Washington Avenue, our guys are not back until Monday morning. So we have a bad Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, Friday night, Saturday, Sunday. You know, it's pretty, pretty ugly. So we're able to address that, and again, we're doing that without spending exerting any additional funds. PSCNG has identified about 14 streets that they're gonna be replacing regular gas lines with high-pressure gas lines. We get an advantage of that. Not only is it more cost-efficient, but certainly, your appliances will work better. We'll have the 12 or 14 streets up on our website, and obviously, like any other street that we repair, they'll be noticed. On the agenda tonight, we are awarding a contract for the infamous pile of soil at the Public Works Garage that's been there for umpteen years, I'm not too sure.
A lot of applause there.
It's great. Don't stop. But, yeah, so we did go out to bid once before. Took a look at it. We thought we could change the specification around to work in our favor, and the prices came in actually less per ton and per yard. So we have about $200,000 to $300,000 earmarked in this year's budget. To start the brush. Can I just interrupt you for one second? Absolutely. The second round of prices came in cheaper because it was found to, after tests, it was found to be non-contaminative. That's also, we had bid analyticals, and the analyticals came back much better than anybody I expected. So that's also a good point. And last but not least, this coming week, we have the homecoming up at the high school, and today, our new scoreboard was installed, and that, I know, has been waiting for a while. Would've been great to have it in September, but I know Councilman Graziano...
Would've been great to have Councilman announce that.
Absolutely. Hey, you're doing a great job. You're getting a lot of applause, I don't know.
Yeah, so this last week, we had a great activity with our fire department. With October is fire prevention. We had a great open house last Friday, this past Sunday, in the liquid rain, because it's liquid sunshine, actually. We had a good turnout. And again, when you, when you see the, I've been doing this for 27 years, and when you see the police or the fire have an open house or some sort of an event, and you get that kind of feeling from the community that they come out, take time out of their day to drive over to the firehouse, or to come out in the rain and have a hot dog with the police department, that says a lot about not only the police and the fire department, but as the community as a whole. And that's something that we all should be very proud of. But again, I see the fire chief and the police chief in the room, so I always say, "Thank you." If you'd like to have a podium down there.
I know.
Next up, we have the report of the mayor. I'm gonna just quickly go through a couple items, and I have a short presentation. But I always like to go backwards and forward, so we had, our food truck festival was a great success. I wanna thank police, thank fire, thank CPW, everybody who made that a renowned success. We had our Italian flag raising last week, followed by our Columbus Day Parade. As you just heard from the manager, we had the fire department open house, which was a great success. And we had the police community outreach, which was a moderate success because of the weather. I have to say, chief, fire department had more people. But Mother Nature didn't shine on you on Sunday.
Stop batting so fit.
Yeah. So a few big things before I get to my quick presentation. Yesterday, I had a meeting with North Mayor Rosmarca. That meeting went very well. I'll be announcing the details of that as we start working our way through them. But I can say that it was a very positive meeting. I think Bellevue's gonna like the outcome of one or two of those topics that we discussed. As soon as we hash out some of the details, and I have specifics to tell you, I will be giving them to you, but I can tell you that you're gonna be happy with some of that meeting, the outcome. I also have a meeting, I had a meeting this Friday, this coming Friday, scheduled for the governor's office. That has been postponed, so now I'm not getting into the governor's office in about two weeks. I'm suspicious it has something to do with the giant billboard, Route 21, asking for help and asking for assistance. But yeah, we are going in shortly. I expect to be there within the next two or three weeks, probably. We've been also in contact with Essex County regarding applying for a bond to potentially take our option if we wanna repair some streets and do some stuff with that. While we haven't formally done anything yet, I know Mr. Iacono and his team are exploring those options. We're also reaching out to New Jersey Infrastructure Bank. That is one of the topics that I discussed with Mayor Baraka yesterday. He urged us to do that because there is, I don't wanna call it free money, but debt forgiveness grants there that we could potentially qualify for. So that was good. I wanna let you know that we have not forgotten our late hours in Construction Code Department. As of tomorrow, they are open again, late hours until 6 o'clock. They do this, I believe, every two weeks. You heard the manager let the cat out of the bag that this Friday's homecoming, something Councilman Graziano's been working very hard on, is the new scoreboard that will be there. If you're at our homecoming game this coming Friday, you will definitely see that new scoreboard. And I wanna thank Councilman Graziano. He's been on that for a year now. Remind our Bellevue residents to log on to filtersforbevel.org if and when filters become available. And again, we are under no federal, no state mandate to provide filters or bottle order. But if and when filters become available, and I'm optimistic that they will, become available in some quantity, we're gonna probably be looking to that website first as a registration, as to who's requesting them. And also, if we get, if we don't get enough to hand out to the entire town in the first go-around, we'd like to use that to prioritize. Prioritize to families that have children under the age of six, anybody who's elderly, infirm, or pregnant or nursing women. So if you can get on there to register, that would be great. I think that was it. We have two weeks before November Election Day. I wanna urge you all to participate and to vote. You all remember, a couple years ago, we had a school referendum. I take no position on that publicly here, but I will tell you that 1,700 people voted to approve that, approved that $50 million bond that obligated us to a tax increase of $200 to change for next 27 years. So I do urge you all to participate and get out and vote. Tonight, we have a very important vote on the agenda today. It's for a pilot, for a pilot, for a tax abatement program to get some development spurred here on Washington Avenue. You can hear a little bit more about that in a few seconds. Friday, October 26th, is the Halloween Pumpkin Patch. Please make sure you attend. That's a great program. The Rec Department adds. Upcoming, November 9th, we have our Veterans Day Weekend 5K race. We had 180 runners last year. We're looking for north of 200. Proceeds directly go to benefit our four Veterans Day organizations, as well as offer a scholarship and help offset some of the costs from our Veterans Day Parade. And then, that next Sunday, the following day, I should say, Sunday, November 10th, is our Veterans Day Parade. So without further ado, I just wanna, I know we have a very special presentation tonight, or a very special vote before the council tonight, and I just wanna take a few minutes to educate you all as to what you're gonna go through, and what you're gonna see, and what you might hear tonight. So I'm just gonna, forgive me for a few seconds. I'm gonna relocate down below and give a quick little presentation. So I know that there's a lot of people here tonight. I do see some new faces, and I appreciate that. I think that you all should be here to participate, especially when the township is about to move forward and the way that we're about to move forward. There's a lot of people, as I go throughout town, that are interested in tax relief. So property relief happens when you do one of two things. You either cut spending, or you increase revenue. Sadly, up until now, the only source of increasing revenue to meet Bellevue's budgetary needs has been you, the residential taxpayer. However, there is another way to increase revenue, and that's by allowing the redevelopment of either contaminated or underutilized property, so it generates a larger chunk of revenue. Property taxes are comprised of two assessments. You have land, and you have improved value. The land value is the cost of the land. The improvement value is the cost of the structure that's on the land. Vacant land pays only land tax. Therefore, it doesn't generate much revenue. Regarding pilots, pilots is an acronym for a payment in lieu of taxes. Today, we consider the final step in a very long process. Allow me to dispel the false notion that the mayor, the manager, or the council can just arbitrarily hand out pilots to any developer. We cannot. The process to offer a pilot program encompasses the council, planning board, certified municipal planners, professionals, many public meetings, public hearings, and a very stringent public noticing process. The process is interchanged between the council and the planning board several times, and includes an ordinance change and several declarations, all of which follow strict state protocols. In order for a pilot to be considered, the property must already be in a redevelopment area that has a redevelopment plan adopted. It is a very long process, and the public has several meetings with the option for public participation and public commenting to be heard. A pilot application for the proposed tax abatement is then submitted to the township and its professionals, and it must demonstrate that but for the tax abatement, the project would not be able to proceed. The township is then left with a decision to either let the property continue in its current state or enter into a pilot agreement, which will generate more revenue than its current state. As I mentioned, property taxes are a combination of land taxes and improvement taxes, which are distributed among three entities, county, school district, and municipality. Under a pilot, it's simply not true that the development pays no taxes. It's also not true that the school district receives nothing. As a matter of fact, once there's an improvement on the land, the value of the land increases, meaning there's even more taxes paid to the school district. Now, that's the land side of taxes, which does not change under a pilot. If we could somehow incentivize a developer by helping make a development project financially viable, which means the bank will finance construction, we could get improvements built on the property. If we get that, guess what? We receive much more revenue, which goes a long way to stabilizing property taxes. Thankfully, the state of New Jersey allows us to provide that incentive. It's called a pilot. So the property which is the subject of tonight's pilot currently yields $28,000 a year in land taxes for the main portion, of which the municipality receives only a third of that $28,000. We get nothing for the improvement because the land is vacant, and it's been vacant for years. You will hear some say that the property was previously approved for 80 units. To them, I say, "Yes, it was, 12 years ago." Since then, we've had 12 years of only our small proportional share of the $28,000 a year land tax, and that's all we've got. So when you hear them call pilots a subsidy for a developer while Bellevue residents foot the bill, this is simply not true. I would challenge them by saying Bellevue residents have been footing the bill for 12 years that the property's been vacant, throwing off minimal taxes. Year one of this pilot will generate a payment to Bellevue of $361,000. And in year 12 of this project, the exact place we would be today if the project that had been vacant for the last 12 years was given a pilot, we would be at $500,000 a year. So basically, not giving a pilot 12 years ago cost Bellevue residents $5.1 million in lost revenue. Tell me now why pilots are a bad deal. Instead, we received only about a third of $290,000 in vacant land payments. That's it. So as you can see, we must incentivize developers to build by easing and allowing the payments to allow them to scale up with growth. A project which wasn't financially viable now becomes viable, and we receive more revenue. You may ask now, "Okay, I understand pilots. Pilots benefit the town and taxpayers, but what about impact to schools?" I'm glad we thought that. I recently took the liberty of researching our last multi-unit residential project, which actually dates back 15 years. The Essex Park Project on Franklin Avenue. The first thing you should know about this project is that it's a gated community, a townhouse-style development, and not an apartment building, which is kinda being proposed today. But the numbers are quite interesting. Essex Park contains 262 units, which as of a few months back, contain only 19 children. That is .07 students per household. Not .7 students, .07 students. And again, keep in mind, this is a gated community, townhouse-style development, not the mostly one-bedroom apartments which are currently being proposed. Here's the important information. As for our tax collector, in total, Essex Park pays $1.14 million a year to the school district for a near 19 students. That's a staggering $60,000 per child. Keep in mind, those 19 students are blended over three school types. So if you're here today worried about impact to the school district, I hope you are now satisfied. Most modern residential housing projects produce far less children than you may have, you may have been led to be assumed. Statistics don't lie. Lastly, if you're still worried about the impact of schools, you should know that out of Bellevue's top 20 property taxpayers, 17 of them are commercial, meaning they produce not one child in our school district. You should also know that these commercial properties pay a total of $2.2 million a year to the school district. Again, that money is paid to the school district in exchange for zero students. In conclusion, just go outside, drive around. Every other surrounding municipality's gone through a renaissance in the past decade. I'm tired of Bellevue being left behind. I'm tired of the residential taxpayers footing the bill, all because we cannot attract major development projects because of our fear and our misunderstanding of pilots. Today, the choice is simple. If we do nothing, we let vacant property stay as-is, and we let our residential taxpayers foot the bill. Or we work with the development community. We offer incentives to allow Bellevue to move forward with a windfall of revenue. In my humble opinion, it is a win-win. Thank you all. Communications?
A letter received from Mayor Michael Melham to Armando V. Conturo, Essex County Office of Emergency Management Coordinator, according Deputy Chief Morton Luntz as OEM Coordinator for the township of Bellevue for a term of three years beginning January 1st, 2020. Being letter received from Mayor Michael Melham to Armando V. Conturo, Essex County Office of Emergency Management Coordinator, according Police Captain Nicholas G. Reiner as Deputy OEM Coordinator for the township of Bellevue for a full-term beginning January 1st, 2020. AMC notice received from Chris Durkin, Essex County Clerk, stating that an early voting site to vote by mail for the November 5th general election will be at the South Mountain Recreation Center, located at 560 Northfield Avenue in West Orange, starting today through Monday, November 4th.
Next up, we have item 10, special action.
Resolution approving the application of 78-102
Resolution approving the application of 78-102 Washington Avenue Urban Renewal LLC for a long-term tax exemption.
Motion. Motion made, second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Strumeloburg.
No.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Resolution's approved.
Ordinance.
Ordinance one for introduction, ordinance to the Township Council of the Township of Bellville, amendment chapter 3-39A, section 3-39A2 of the police regulation, section of the Township of Bellville.
Make the motion for introduction. Motion made, second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Strumeloburg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number two for introduction, and ordinance vacating a portion of Mill Street used as a public street. Make the motion for introduction. Motion made, second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Strumeloburg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance for public hearing, and second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing, ordinance to the Township Council of the Township of Bellville, chapter 21 of the Property Maintenance Code.
Make a motion open for public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second. Open public hearing. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Strumeloburg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Mr. Frantantonio. Mr. Frantantonio, council, if the mayor, you own the Bullard property, that you're right, but you've got to be held accountable when you don't speak the truth. Number one, you stated this property's been vacant last 12 years.
Mr. Frantantonio, it's not public participation. This is second to none, ordinance.
Yeah, which ordinance?
First one.
Property maintenance, sir.
Property maintenance, sir.
First one.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. Motion closed. Motion closed, and move for final adoption.
Second.
Motion made, second, to close and move for final adoption.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Strumeloburg.
No.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number two. Ordinance number two for public hearing, ordinance approving the financial agreement for long-term tax exemption via between the Township of Bellville, 78-102 Washington Avenue Urban Renewal LLC.
Motion to open for public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second. Open public hearing. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Strumeloburg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Mr. Frantantonio.
So I'll continue. Number one, you said that that land's been vacant for 12 years. That's not so. There was a car lot on there until recently, which the owner evicted it. He did not leave willingly, so that property was occupied for many years. And before that, there was a building that burnt down. The other thing that you said, you know, the vacant land, and this project went through several meetings, planning board, where the public had a right to speak out, and again, many of us did speak out. It was, and I use the word because it's accurate and I'll stand up in any court law, it was a phony redevelopment plan. It was not an area needed redevelopment. It's a piece of prime property on Washington Avenue that was being used and all, and it was not an area. When they evicted the tenant, they then go before the planning board, and the experts says, oh my God, it's an area redevelopment because the building is dilapidated and the blinds are broken in the building. The building they were talking about was about a 12-by-15 office for the car lot. It was not a building. So the presentation before the planning board was as phony as hell, right? And several of us spoke up and contested that it was an area needed redevelopment. And it went through a couple of meetings, and there was no justification for declaring area needed redevelopment. Then, on November 22nd, 2017, in the Observer newspaper, there was an interview by a gentleman named Michael Melham. And in that, as an example, Mr. Melham said, "Bellville's a place," in his right from these article, "Bellville's a place with 36,000 people shoved into two square miles. We don't have the capacity for big apartment complexes. Prior township approvals granted for an 80-unit residential building on Washington Avenue on the old Bigelow Motors lot is an example of bad planning." There, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, except that you made a little mistake.
That was a bad plan.
Huh?
That was a bad plan. I stand behind that.
Yeah, you said, "Oh, it's..."
That won't be the first I was thinking.
"We don't have the capacity for big apartment complexes." That's what you said.
I think my position on redevelopment is clear for a long time.
Secondly, you were wrong. That was not on the old Bigelow Motors property. The Bigelow Motors property now houses Family Dollar, the Chicken Place, Popeye's Chicken, the laundry, and all.
Or we're planning.
So, well, you probably didn't know it at the time because you weren't living in Bellville at the time, so you weren't familiar what was going on in our lovely town and all. So this, I agree wholeheartedly. This is too much of a development. Now, the, in 2015, a developer come at the pre-meeting, stood right there, and he said he wants to build something in Bellville down on Perry and Portland Street, right? At that meeting, he stated, "If I, the developer, want to build market-rate luxury rental housing," and this is from the transcript of the meeting that I opened, so it's pretty accurate, he said, "If I had to pay $4,500," enough, "if I build these luxury rates, the township is being titled to $4,000 to $4,500 in taxes per unit. If I had to pay $4,500 in taxes per unit, I would fail my financing test for the banks." So a bank will not loan on that. So what he wants, he wants to weed the taxpayers, and that's what a pilot is, weed the taxpayers or subsidize him. Then he goes on to say in that one...
Is this on this particular ordinance on Washington Avenue, Mr. Frantantonio?
Yeah, well, I'm telling you, you explain pilots, so I have the right to explain also in regard to this ordinance.
You can explain that in public commenting. Right now, you need to comment specifically on this ordinance.
Yes, on this ordinance, I'm commenting. We do not need, if he wants to build that, fine. You think that's good? That's fine. The planner wants to be. We don't want to give him a pilot.
Sure.
Let him put his own money. I bought four properties in Bellville, broken down. I fixed every one of them out of my pocket and my sweat labor, and other people have done the same. Now, when you say a pilot, we're going to get $361,000 for, I take the new product from 80 units, if I recall, is that now 150 some units?
Yes.
Okay, so we're only getting $360,000. But, what you didn't say is what we have to pay with that $360,000, which we'll never afford. We got to provide services: police, firemen, marriage licenses, death certificates, sure it, or...
We actually make money off marriage licenses and permits and everything else.
These are services that burden our township. If we have to give an equity, the clerks, then we have to hire...
I think this is a stretch.
Right. Then it, no, it's not a stretch, because then it's happening every, and let me tell you, Montclair is fighting now the Lacawanna project. They're up in arms with Montclair with all this development. It's killing the people in taxes. And the Matthew Boxer, who was the state comptroller back a few years, wrote a report on redevelopment. There isn't a single town that did, gave these pilots any redevelopment that has decreased taxes. They increased because you have more people who demand more services: recreation, all the other services that, government, somebody could turn, our health department has to provide services on it. So it doesn't. So I'm imploring you six council people, one of them who's not here tonight, ironically, he was opposed to Essex Park. They wanted 25 units per acre, they reduced it to 21. I have his campaign literature. I think 21 unit density is too much.
Can you keep on this ordinance, Mr. Frantantonio? I need you to keep on this ordinance.
Yes, this is all the, you gave your talk, all about this pilot, you gave all your explanation.
That was not during the public commenting of this ordinance.
I'm giving my objections.
You can do that during public commenting.
I'm entitled to give my objection to this pilot program.
Keep it on this pilot. Not 20 years ago, when a councilman who's not here voted on it.
Well, because I have the right to explain to the public the prior positions of council people, who is now changing.
I enjoy what you're explaining there from your point of view, I really do.
And then, the, one of the final things I'll say here, you were opposed to this excessive development, you know, it's too much for them, and then once you become a mayor, and I think this is illegal and we're still checking into it, you send a letter out to all real estate brokers and sales associates, and you tell them, "Come to me, I'll give you a special meeting. I have no problem to consider all options, including declaring properties and needing redevelopment via condemnation and non-condemnation, and exploring the right of tax...
I'm the mayor, how's that a bad idea? I'm the mayor.
Huh?
I'm the mayor. How's that a bad idea to reach out to real estate community and say, "I want to talk to them"?
Because, number one, you're only a councilman, and the mayor, the only extra right you have, you chair meetings and you sign contracts. But the municipal, we're a council manager, former governor. We're not the mayor council like Barack in Newark. In Newark, he controls everything there. You don't. You only have one vote as a council person, and your extra duties are just to sign contracts and chair meetings. So you, in my opinion, some of the actions are taken violate the council manager, former governor, under the fourth grant.
I do need you to keep your comments to this ordinance.
I'm asking the rest of you, hopefully, this is not in Bellville's best interest. If that developer wants to build that project, and he thinks it's financially liable, and I have to refer to the Terry Street project, because I have the developer's agreement and the financial agreement, and he brands on how much profit, a $1.2 million profit he's going to make. So if he's going to make this profit, why are we going to give him a pilot, and why are we going to pay the taxes? So I'm begging you, council people, not only voting out, but open up and look at it. My two sons live in Bloomfield, and in seven years, my one son's tax almost doubled. Montclair, I got customers, I got a real estate agent, you know, so on. The prices of them homes, the tax on their homes are going through the roof. One of his clients, a million and a half house...
Mr. Frantantonio, I need you to keep your comments to this, not Bloomfield, not your family, but...
Well, I'm telling you what happened with this. There was a million and a half house. Six years later, they put up the sale, and it come down to 860. A young couple said, "Beautiful, I'll take it." They went back to the realtor's office, when they saw $39,000 in taxes, they walked away. This is what all this development does. You keep giving this, the all that, it's going to be a traffic nightmare, and again, fine, if they want to build, fine, out of their own pockets. They want to put that hand in that pocket and pull out that cash, or sign the loans, let them do it. God bless them, I hope they make $10 million a year on it.
Thank you.
But don't ask me and the rest of the taxpayers to pay for it.
Thank you.
On Memorial Drive, 95 Bell Street. I noticed, excuse me?
Can you just speak up? It's hard to hear.
You didn't hear me? I can't believe this.
Can't hear you.
I know the vote's probably there, more than likely, I mean, I've been coming here a long time, for 30 years. I've sat up there, and I know how everything's done, so I'm nearly going to get into that. Look, the project is beautiful, I'm not going to criticize the project. We do need a lot of development in Bellville, and I've been on that case, but my only objection is five years. There's no reason in the world to give a 30-year tax abatement, 25-year tax abatement.
This is not a 30-year, but...
I said 25-30, not to be technical. No, I understand it's going to create 40 jobs and 550 construction jobs.
It also generates $300,000 in a payment the first year.
I heard, I heard that number, but let me finish talking, and you can say what you want. You can finish, you can say what you want, but let me say what I want for a change. Okay? Because the reason I'm questioning that is, this project's supposed to bring 40 permanent jobs because of the retail downstairs, 150 construction jobs, I'll give it that. And you gave out another pilot program for a storage facility, and I have a copy of the Oprah that I did on it. It was supposed to have created 250 construction jobs. I want to know where a storage facility creates 250 construction jobs. I pass it every day, and I'm still scratching my head. I talk to people, everybody says to me, "Where's those 250 jobs?" So I question that, you know, if the applicant's going to be accurate, he should be accurate. I mean, this project takes more people to build than a storage facility, and you gave a 30-year abatement on that, so I don't think, something's wrong there. That's number one. These jobs, how many bedrooms are it going to be? 28 bedrooms? Two-bedroom apartments? And I suppose they're not going to bring any children in?
Well, I just...
You know what I like? I like what you said before.
Is that a question?
No, let me finish up, and you can say what you want. Let me finish up.
So you're not asking a question?
Okay. Well, I like what you said before about Bellville, Essex Park. Essex Park is paying $60,000 per child, per child. They should be, I'm in favor of condominiums. Want to give them a tax break? Condominiums are fine, they're paying more than their fair share. The school board, the school, our school system needs to help, because what's going to happen is you're going to point the finger on, some of you are going to point the finger later on as Board of Education, "Oh, look, they're raising my taxes." If they don't get the tax dollars in, how can they educate the kids? Everything's for the children when you're campaigning. And also, I want to point something out to you: Gutenberg, Gutenberg prices are very high. Here they are, buy property in Gutenberg, five-year tax abatement. This is an article you sent me, by a mill as a realtor, Jersey City, Columbus, hitting milestone, Toll Brothers. It's called "The Real Deal." 1,400 rentals, hotel park, and retail, beautiful. They were happy to get a five-year tax abatement in black and white that you sent me, so that's fine. So why, why we have it on the books, a five-year abatement? Why do we have to go up to 25? And you know what? I would even be generous, say, you know what, a project like that, I'll give you zero for the first year, then, then five-year abatement after that, but not 25 years. Do you know how many people are taking out reverse mortgages because they can't afford their taxes? I do this every day.
That's probably because this has been vacant for 12 years, throwing off $28,000.
Let's not change the subject. I'm talking about the ordinance. Want to be fair? For every child that goes there, let the developer give an extra $18,000 per child, then give them their 25. That's fair. It's called negotiation. Is there anything wrong with that?
Thank you.
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walmart. I believe in 2013, that very property was considered for a long-term tax abatement. That property has been shadowed all that time, I believe, 2013 and before, that there was a pending tax abatement. There is almost no open lots developable up and down Bellville Avenue, south toward Newark and through Newark. It is that popular business area now, all through that area. And so, when that came up before the council, Mayor Kimball, it was reported, I believe, in the Bellville Times, and Mayor Kimball, and it also was supported by Councilman Rovell, voted against it, because Mayor Kimball stated to the press that it was going to lose Bellville in excess of $3 million in the life of that loan at that time, I believe it's a shorter term.
Do you have any data to support that?
Yeah, there's a news article.
No, no, how many data to support the loss of $3 million? Can you tell me where it was?
That was what, that was the determination over the life of that pilot, what it was going to deprive Bellville taxation-wise.
But he's not here to answer that. Can you answer that as to how we're going to lose $3 million?
Because, well, my point was originally that certainly if it were priced properly, not being shadowed by the promise of a redevelopment pilot program, which would give taxpayer money off to developers who don't live in Bellville, don't care about Bellville, and could potentially put kids in the schools, that is almost now $20,000 a head per year. And so, why give a tax exemption to a developer to build residential where it's going to potentially cost you money, and yet the schools will benefit zero from that pilot? The township gets 95% of the tax money, and the county gets five, and the, and the schools get zero.
That's not true. I just got done explaining.
Well, only on land, land is land is land.
You can't say zero.
Well, but land is land is land, so the taxes that follow the formula for land values Well, but land is land is land, so the taxes that follow the formula for land values are distributed amongst the township, the schools.
You can't say zero.
Well, but the point is, when is it not the case that the school benefits from their proportional value of the land? Let's be serious, let's not play games. I mean, this is serious stuff. This is 25 years of tax abatement for which ultimately...
Or is that like to say 25 years of guaranteed payments?
You know what? You point to the 300...
We started $300,000 a year, we end up at $800,000 a year.
You point to the initial payment of the taxation.
No, scaling up and get $800,000 in year 25.
The first year of the pilot, the developers required to give a burst of 10% of the tax value to the town. And then it has a graduated process where as the dictates of the agreement require, yes, but the fact of the matter is...
You said 300,000 in year one, 500,000 in year 12, and 800,000...
I have a very good question about this. Well then, why is in that development pilot program exempting the schools? Why isn't it built into the schools?
You have to ask the state legislature that.
How about because rehabilitating formerly vacant industrial polluted lands is not conducive to putting housing on and ultimately, they didn't want that figured in, in my opinion, figured into the tax abatement program to encourage schools and public use places where people live and work, you know? Let it be commercial, let it be industrial, just rehab it, clean it. So why are we giving tax abatements to developers only to potentially have them live on polluted lands? And back to that...
Just so the general public knows, this land is not polluted.
No, it is not, but others are. And your proposal to develop a lot of formerly polluted lands or even take them under eminent domain that are extremely polluted, and so now, and for what purpose then? Why are we involving the town? So this is a tax abatement to a developer and yet it was determined that it would be a loss in 2013 to the township taxpayers.
I don't stand by that assessment.
All right, well then the tax, you know, abatement meaning reduction of the requirement, why should a developer pay less than I do for my home or my business, which does fund the town? I have a 14,000 square foot industrial building. I pay taxes and I get nothing for it other than thankfully, police and fire, which I love, but everyone like the land gets police and fire protection. However, it is also directly proportional to the amount of people in the town. You get more police, more fire, more DPW people per thousand residents. So let's just keep running more resident and increasing, and then the likelihood that you'll have to build more schools and space and hire more people. Expanding the overhead is not the intention, but that is how it's being used for residential development pilot programs, which in my opinion is very bad and not good for the town and does ultimately end up on the back of the existing tax base where they pay 50% of less than we do for the same space use of taxation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
47 Floyd Street. Just want to start off by saying that every time there seems to be some advocacy on part of the council for a suspicious dubious pilot, these meetings kind of devolve into a time-sharing presentation. So, with that said, I want to get out my shovel and start removing some of the mure that we were given a few moments ago. To begin with, you made a comment that the last time anything was approved on this site was 12 years ago, which is a complete lie or you don't have your facts correct. In fact, to set the record straight, and our chair, the zoning board is here, perhaps he will say something about this as well. In October 2015, the zoning board heard the revised plan for this project. Yes, it's true that 12 years ago there was an initial presentation, but what you failed, very strategically failed to acknowledge was that this property was revisited by the zoning board in October of 2015. The developer decided to remove one floor and while he kept the number of units fixed at 80, initially it was going to be 42-bedroom, 41-bedroom. He changed the configuration so that it would be 32-two-bedroom, 48-one-bedroom to help reduce any impact the structure may have on our school system.
And did he build it?
Let me finish, let me finish. All right, I'm giving you the history. Since you were legally residing in Lynnhurst from 2011 to 2016, but yet feloniously voting in Belleville elections, you may not be up on all your recent Belleville history, so that's what I'm doing in this initial part of my presentation. October 2015, the developer gives us full presentation, the vote, if I remember correctly, was 6-1 in favor of this. The building was going to have one less floor, 80 units, 32-two-bedroom, 48-one-bedroom, and a restaurant. There was going to be some retail on the corner of William Street and Washington Street with sufficient indoor parking, which was also going to be controlled, was one of the conditions. So, that was approved October 2015. Two years later, as you hopefully know, whenever the zoning board memorializes a project, the developer has two years to pull permits. October of 2017, he comes back before us, asks for a one-year extension. We immediately grant it. But now, so now he's covered through October of 2018.
So that's three years of no improvement on the property.
No, scheduled improvement. He was willing, he was going to build without a permit.
Concept plans don't pay taxes.
He was going to build without a permit. Please, don't change the topic. Let me finish, you can, if I have questions, I will ask you, but let me say what I want to say. He was going to build this project without any taxpayer subsidies.
And he didn't build it.
No, because in all likelihood, he learned out that with the possibility of change on the part of the council, to hold off and wait to see what is, how his luck would pan out if he could get a council that was pilot-friendly. So, let me continue. Let me continue. When this project was approved by the zoning board, the Board of Education demographer, Whitehall Associates, I think Mr. Graziano may have still been on the board at the time, we asked our demographer to do an update on the potential impact projects like this would have on the school district. The demographer said, as originally planned, the 32-two-bedroom, 48-one-bedroom units would produce at a minimum 15 kids, at least 15 kids.
So why is it that the townhouse development in Belleville, which we don't need a demographer to tell us that because it's actually there, which has 260 units in its townhouse development, only has 19 and you said last time it had gone down actually?
It's because you're comparing apples and oranges. You and Mr. Banda have repeatedly cited at recent planning board meetings a Rutgers study which tries...
I'm not saying a Rutgers study. Up studies, our study, Essex Park and all.
Let me finish, let me finish. You have brought up in planning board meetings about projects like this, the potential impact or lack thereof of these projects on the school system. The Rutgers study makes it very clear that townhomes are different than apartment buildings. You, to your own personal interest, makes a match.
You would think a townhouse would have more kids.
Don't compare Essex Park, don't compare Essex Park to this. Essex Park is a townhome, it goes under a different calculation mechanism than an apartment building. This apartment building...
You would think it would yield more kids, it's a townhome.
No, no, because of the nature of rentals, for whatever reason Rutgers found, there are more kids brought in when there are rental units than when people make the commitment to purchase a townhome. For whatever reason, that's what the Rutgers report concludes. All right, so, anyway, so with 80 units here, the Whitehall Associates' demographers are saying at least 15 kids. You're now doubling the number of units to almost 160. So, just by simple extrapolation, we're going to now have upwards of 30 kids, all things beneath the law.
Is that a statement you're going to stand behind, 30 kids?
It's safe to assume based on the demographer's analysis...
I don't know who the demographer was.
I just told you, Whitehall Associates, they're a very credible demographer. I'll send you the report if you happen to receive it from Dr. Tomko. So, on this basis, we're looking at probably at least 30 kids coming from this project that realized. Now, as I think Mr. Mattingly mentioned, it currently costs upwards of $20,000 on average when all costs are considered to educate each kid in our school system. So...
That $20,000 is paid by Belleville taxpayers or that includes state aid?
So, there...
I'll go ahead and answer the question.
The taxpayer input is now approaching about $15,000. No, but the total cost, but as Mr. President Tony will point out, even though it may be coming to state aid, who pays the state aid? We all do, one way or the other. That money comes to us from our tax payments. So don't try to, again, delude this notion that somehow only Belleville taxpayers are responsible for a small portion of the total tax obligation. In the end, we all pay for that. It's going to cost about, right out of the gate, about $600,000 a year to educate the kids. Now, as you acknowledge and as Mr. Drosta has the chart as well, the first year, it's only $361,000 in pilot payments. That's not even, that'll just about cover the educational cost. And to correct another thing that you're wrong about, and I think you're willingly giving false information, when it comes to pilots, yes, the Board of Education continues to receive tax income, but it's on the assessed value of the land. When you give a pilot...
I think I admitted that.
No, you very cleverly mixed and folded this.
I even said, after a development goes on top of the assessed value of the land goes up, which means the school district gets more money. I clearly said that.
When the improvement value, which is what the pilot pertains to, when you look at that part of the tax bill, the improvement value, 95% of that revenue goes to you, 5% goes to the county, and the board gets zero. The board's tax revenue is based on the assessed value of the land. So until there's a new assessment, which may not be five years or 10 years or 15 years from now, the board doesn't realize any additional income to pay for the kids. So as Mr. Drosta correctly pointed out, when all of these new kids arrive in the school system, the board will have no choice but to increase the local tax levy, which you'll then conveniently blame on us for not managing the school finances.
I'd like to say that actually.
Look, as I've pointed out in previous meetings, the New Jersey School Board Association has put out multiple policy statements, which I'm sure has made its way to every municipality, that when any township is considering pilot programs, you have an obligation because of the potential impact this has on all the children and the rest of the taxpayers in the township, to involve the Board of Education in these decisions, to make sure that every interest is properly served. As far as I know, you've had no communication with Board of Education, with Dr. Tomko about any pilot programs. You take this onto yourself without any involvement, any input from the entity that would be most adversely affected by these pilots. On this council, you have two people who are former Board of Education trustees. You have another council member who's a former Belleville school teacher, and another council member whose wife was one of our best, most exemplary administrators in the history of the school district. You have four people here who know exactly what the impact this project could have on our school system. And until you know down to the penny how this project will positively or adversely affect the school district, it is inappropriate for you, in my opinion, to vote on this. There are too many questions that have to be answered. There are too many questions that have to be answered about the finances. This $360,000 the first year going up to $500,000 in year 12, it won't even begin to cover, it won't begin to cover even the Board of Education cost for this township. Please, for those of you who have had direct involvement with the Board of Education, listen to what I'm saying. You have, you not only serve the municipality, but your actions also impact the Board of Education. You need to ask more questions before you vote on this project or any other similar pilot program. Thank you.
Thank you.
(Applause).
Counselor, do you have anything to say?
No, I would just like to comment on, if I may, Mr. Sheldon, you're making assumptions, like to me, that I was part of something and/or that you know that things haven't been discussed with Dr. Tomko. But it's our responsibility to do what we're doing for the community and the town, but it's also your responsibility as a Board of Ed member to make sure that the children, when I was on the board, you had, you went back and you had the revaluations every year, re-registration. If I'm not mistaken, there were a lot of Board of Education members, yeah, that did not want to re-register every year or pay someone to do it, to make sure, with studies that were done across other towns where they had illegal children in the school district, which would bring the number down. Okay, so I just want to share that too. It's responsibility on both ends to make that number stay low. That's all I'm saying. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. You're going to be doing a public comment thing, I can't back the board.
No, this is pertinent, everything. Mr. Graziano, as you know, in September 2016, Dr. Tomko did, for the first time in many years, following the tragedy that fell our district during the 2012-2014 Board of Education era. He, realizing that a lot of people had slipped in to our school system who weren't Belleville residents, he forced them to re-register.
Mr. Sheldon, you can make this point during public comment, you can't have the back door.
I just want Mr. Graziano to be aware of the fact that we're going to re-register.
Keep it aware, you'll be more aware during public comment. Anybody else? May I have the back? You?
Me? Mary Higgins, I want my address.
I don't want it, it's a...
I'm truly amazed...
We actually do need your address.
My address, what grade are you right now? I'm truly amazed at your presentation, Mayor Mallett, because you've made a good attorney for the developers. It was 100% for the developers and not one iota for the taxpayers in Belleville. So I would like to add two examples you left out of your pilot program. You said how great they are, how much revenue they're going to generate, et cetera, et cetera. But you forgot to mention a development that was actually granted a retro pilot because they ran out of money, which is the Soho property. Now that has not generated any income for the township. In fact, we've been paying taxes on that to support municipal services, although there are no schoolchildren there because it hasn't been opened yet. Number two, the second one, the second one, is the so-called senior citizen age restricted housing on Mill Street also granted a pilot. And if anybody lives on that side of Belleville, every day you drive by there and what do you see? You see school buses going there dropping children off. So don't say that there are no schoolchildren living in these pilot project developments because there are. And who's paying the taxes for that? Who's picking it up?
It's the pilot, the developer is making the payment.
Developers paying for... No, because in the age restricted housing, they are not allowed to have children living there, but they are and nobody is supervising it. So who's picking up the taxes for these children?
That's actually the Board of Education's job, check addresses and find that which is wrong.
No, but it's also incumbent upon you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Frank Fleischman, 833 Main Street. So, you're saying that you consider this pilot basically 25 years of guaranteed payments, am I correct?
It is, yes.
Because I'm not entirely educated on the pilot program, let me ask you, let's say theoretically we have another housing crash or market crash like we did in 2007, and the developer goes under. Where do those claims come from?
Well, let me just answer this question. I thought you were going somewhere else. If there's a housing crash, unlike a regular property tax owner that's paying property tax that can file for a tax appeal, there's no tax appeal. They can't, their payments are guaranteed by them while the project is up opposite the 25. They cannot come in, they waive their right for a tax appeal.
Oh, no, that's fine, that's perfectly fine. What I'm wondering is, what happens if this developer loses his shirt, he has no more money? How's he going to pay his 25 years of payments?
I think the rent, the rent does that.
If they get renters, true. The other thing I wanted to know is, as far as the pilot program itself, I looked at the most recent municipal budget and there's a line there that says, you know, BOIV, Belleville Associates, I know that's not about this, okay, it's my point, $25,000 being expected as revenue, okay? Is this developer giving us anything in, you know, to pay forward for anticipated sewer costs, service costs, anything like that? Please tell me that we're getting something.
The answer is yes.
And may I ask what that is?
I don't know if that's been finalized, Mr. Banker? I don't know if that's been finalized yet? But all the developments of this project give a community giveback or contribution back, just probably for X, Y, and Z, usually something relating to that area.
As to the specifics, sewer connection fees and water connection fees are in addition to pilot payment. So they would be paying for both the provision of those services and then they would pay in addition to the pilot payment, they would pay sewer service charges and water service charges. That's not included in the pilot account, that's overdubbed.
Any property paid that.
Also, all right, through you to Mr. Banker, how about like roadway improvements? I mean, this is going to generate traffic.
That's all part of, they handle, even the Belmont project that you're talking about, if not on this topic, they're responsible for doing crosswalks, sidewalks, curving, they do all that.
Finally, I disagree with Mr. Droste here. I mean, he says it looks like a beautiful building, but honestly, it's a bit fuzzy. I've seen, you know, I see basically the same thing in Blount Field also down by Harbison and Newark. It's nothing really remarkable. I would really hope that maybe, if we have to, you know, if we need to do developments, they'd be responsible, maybe kind of conform to where architecture is here, honestly. I'm not going to add to anything that, you know, Mr. Franklin, Tony, Mr. Mattingly, Mr. Sheldon have said, but honestly, you know, this is not a good idea and, you know, Marie Burke was my councilwoman at one time and she notoriously is now currently my councilperson. I sincerely hope that they're going to vote their consciences and, you know, vote this down.
I hope so too. Thank you. Anybody else?
This is my first time in a meeting, so I'm a realtor.
Name and address for the realtor.
Karen DeRose, 331 Division Avenue in Belleville. I'm a realtor, so I know that we need something to generate this town. I think we need investments. I think we need investments. I think it's a great idea, I'm just, this is my first time. My question is, how much is that investor going to make? It's just rentals?
Just rentals, and 10,000 square feet of retail, which is also rental.
Because I know that there's going to be a great amount of income based on rental potential, because for every unit, he's going to make at least 12 to 13, probably 1,400 a month in rent.
The beauty about a pilot is that we actually get, it's a revenue share for the most part. We get a proportional share of that revenue. The more money he makes, the more money that we get.
So we get a percentage of everything he makes?
We do, we get 10% of his revenue the first year.
Okay, now, is there anything, a happy medium to make it work? I mean, I think we need something, Mr. Dross, I think, mentioned was, instead of maybe a 25-year, could they cut that back and make it a shorter term so we could get greater income quicker?
The longer it goes, the more income we get, in my opinion.
But is, he said something, there's a 25-year tax abatement, is that what?
That's what we're doing now.
Is there anything to reduce that, so maybe?
Sure, there's 20 years, to which you'll get that, 10% of that revenue for only 20 years, instead of 10% of that revenue for 25 years. I'd rather 25 years. It's a case-by-case basis, but we get 95% of the revenue that comes in, 10% of it for the first 10 years, it scales out, then you get to 11%, then you get to 12%. By the 25th year, we're getting 12% of the revenue. I'd rather keep it for 25 years than go 20, in my opinion on this particular project. Thank you. Sir?
Joseph Bartabasco, 163 White Oak Terrace, Belville. Michael, I'm an ex-union worker, I sat in many meetings in Montclair and Blount Field about 15 years ago, when the centers have been redeveloped, and they're all pilots. I mean, you don't get anything done unless you give something back to the guy who built it, okay? Blount Field is still building, Montclair is still our place. Schools, I mean, can't worry about the schools because our towns are going to get children. As far as the building, yeah, it's a beautiful building, it looks a lot better than the shack and the level of dirt that's been there for the last 10, five, eight years has been vacant, even when it was a car lot, it was an ugly lot. I'd like to see more like this, all of Washington Avenue. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was Frank Antoni, Mount Prospect Avenue. I'm a homeowner and a business owner in this town, and I don't want to give anybody tax payments. I'm tired of developers coming in our town to build and we're giving away the store. We built our business, if you've got something to say, say it to my face.
Can we, if we just keep it public?
If we, we built our business, didn't ask for anything built out of our pocket. And as far as that, kids won't be in the school, if you have two bedrooms in those apartments, you are definitely going to have kids in the schools. Our schools are overcrowded now. Where are you going to put the kids? Where are they going to go? And you said you give 10%, you're going to lower my taxes 10%? My taxes have not gone down since I live in this town. I know people.
The whole value has gone up, though.
No, not all of them. I know people in other towns, my family grew up in Newark, look at Newark, the first ward now, where they were promised so much with tax abatement and with building. It's terrible. And you're doing to Belville what they did in Newark. We are the new Newark.
Hi, I'm E.P. Tree. To put rentals, like stores down, not in Washington Avenue, it's not a good idea. If you've seen Family Dollar, Dollar Tree, I was in Dollar Tree one day, okay? There was a kid going out to store with a backpack on, stealing the store brand, okay? The manager went after him, we're in the store. I mean, that doesn't, nobody got hurt, nobody got shot at, but Family Dollar, Dollar Tree, they're both hazardous stores down there, and you're going to put more retail stores down there?
They went there when there was an empty land, an empty lot, for 12 years.
It was an empty lot, that was Branch Brook Restaurant, that was a restaurant at the time.
No, I'm talking about because there was an empty lot in their vicinity, two blocks away, it blazed the entire area, in my opinion.
It's too close, it's a disaster then.
So because of that, we should build on it.
Well, if you want, excuse me, can I speak without your comments?
Ma'am, ma'am.
I am, but he's coming at me, okay? Retail stores out there in the town? I don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Here we go, Gershul, 8 Grove Street. Since Mr. Sheldon threw me into this, I'm the chairman of the Zobi Board, to set the record straight. We approved 80 units around 12 years ago, and in 215, they did come back. They came back not to take down one floor, but two floors, one floor of housing and one floor of parking, there's originally three levels of parking, okay? When it came before us, back around 205, I would say, the reason we approved it, way over the density of it at the time, was because, you're right, it was a bad area anywhere from the Town Hall all the way to the North Line. It was depressed. So we approved it. They came back in 215, and one of the reasons this never got built is because the current owner, who bought this, and that's my question, the $28,000 you're talking about in land taxes, is that from the original five lots or the two extra lots that were added on and which is a building there now?
28,000 was the main lot, the park, the old parking lot, the big.
The 28,000, well, it, I'm surprised they're only paying 28,000 because the owner, current owner, overpaid and paid $1.8 million for that property, as I remember. And that was one of the reasons he never could get anything built because he overpaid for the lot, okay? Now there's two extra properties involved. How many units in this final thing, because it's totally different from what came before us, how many units?
160.
160 units.
10,000 square feet of retail.
10,000 in square feet. And you're saying in the 25th year, we're going to realize 800,000 in taxes?
A minimum.
A minimum of it, that's close to 5,000 per unit then, am I correct? I'm sorry, isn't that close to 5,000 per unit? Somewhere around it. Now, Essex, Essex Park, how many units is that?
162 or 4.
Well, 162.
I'm sorry, I apologize, 262.
262.
And that has 19 kids.
And they're not rented. And they're not, but they're paying, if I'm not mistaken, a total of about $5 million a year in taxes to all areas. I'm talking about all three, the Board of Ed, the town, which the town, I believe, is getting closer to about, or maybe more than 2.5 million, and the county. So we're talking about 5 million versus 800,000 in the 25th year, which, from what I saw in the agreement, the 25th year, they'd be paying 8%.
You can't say that, that 5,000, that 5 million is divided among three different entities. The 800,000 optimal around year 25 is just municipal.
Oh, just municipal?
Exactly.
Well, I just told you, they're paying 2.5 million to the municipality.
I don't have it confirmed.
Well, it's 48%.
It's also 100-plus units and a lot larger property. Also, if you could acknowledge that.
Well, I could acknowledge that.
Let's call it nearly double, let's call it nearly double the size of the units, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, you're right.
But still, it's a tremendous amount of money, 2.5 million dollars versus 800,000 in the 25th year, and only, what, about 250,000 in the first, what, 12 years?
Before it goes to 40, 12th year is 500,000.
You just said in the 12th year, it's 400 and something.
12th year is 500,000.
Each year?
In the 12th year, they pay 500,000.
In the 12th year? What are they paying up to the 12th year?
It starts at 300,000, and then it escalates up to the 500 at year 12, and from 12 to 25, we end up a little north of 800,000, on the minimal side.
So it goes up every couple of years a certain amount?
Yes.
Maybe from 500 to 600 to 700 to 800?
Scales up.
But in the 25th year, it's 800,000?
800 plus.
And in the agreement, what that says is, at that time, they're paying 80% of the normal taxes they should be paying.
In the 25th year, 25.
Am I correct?
And then it converts over.
Then it converts, well, if it's paying 80% then, then when it converts over, it'll be a million. Okay, all right.
Anybody else in the back, sir?
I'd just like to say, that is a very nice building. You have to develop it, because in my area, where I live, so the late, I know people who know, are Bielanti brothers, they just moved. You're losing peoples out of our town to other areas. We have one restaurant in Belville, we got a couple of shopping centers, you really don't have anything that people would come here for. To do something like this, you have retailer on the bottom, you have people on top, hey, I paid my taxes in this town while my kids were in school. My kids aren't in school, I still pay my taxes. It's part of life, it's part of what you have to do. I mean, yeah, I'd like to see my taxes come down, but in the meantime, we've got to stop the flow of businesses and people coming, leaving our town, going to other towns, opening up their stores there, because they take them in, they allow them to do things, what they have to do here. If we keep stopping all the development that we're trying to do, we're going to have nothing but, like the woman said, we're the new, we're going to be the new Newark? No, you keep it up and we are going to be Newark, okay? And I lived in Newark, it's not that bad.
Sir, I need you to address your comments as well.
Well, basically, you have to keep redeveloping. Everybody else around us is leaving us in the dust. Nutley, Blount Field, Montclair. I run one of the biggest unions in the state of New Jersey. Our people work for Verizon, we're in Newark, we're in Belville, we're all over the place. I see the different towns, I go, we do poll rules, we do all the things we have to do. Montclair is booming, they're just putting more buildings up. Blount Field, they just knocked down half of Blount Field Center, and they're building more buildings. Why? Because they're getting rateables, they're getting money in. Will it lower the taxes? Hopefully, but right now, we're not even at that point, because we have the smartest people in the audience with stuff from 20 years ago. That's all over you. The day is today, you start now, and you go forward.
Paul Palmer, 40 Berkeley Avenue. I have three kids, and don't go to the school system, so I pay taxes and don't go into the school system. But something like this adds value to the school, to the town, because all businesses are going to flock and say, oh, wait, I have an apartment house here, there will be more small businesses. If people here start going shopping, start going to local food stores, they're going to spend money in the town. I've seen it before, people are going to go on, well, where can I go shopping, where can I go? They're going to spend money in the town. Yes, it's a lot of people, I get that, but they're going to spend money, and they're going to spend money locally in the area, they're going to go to the restaurant somewhere down the road, they're going to go to all the local places, and we have to be ready to accept that. Again, we want change, we want things to happen in Belville, we have to do things like this to let people into the town and expand the town as much as possible. As John said, okay, Bielanti moved out, we have to hold more businesses move back in there, and we have to make it attractive, we have to make the houses better, we have to make the areas better, can they redo Washington Avenue with the whole new weird bike lane thing? It's going to make it attractive, but we have to be ready to make these changes, and actually be for it, as opposed to just complaining about it. Again, it was vacant for so many years. At least at this point, something's moving in. Again, this will attract other people, other businesses, through time.
Thank you.
Joseph Belname, 839 Main Street, Park 8. Just wanted to speak in support of this project, this development. I hope it's the beginning of a lot of development, redevelopment in Belville, because, I don't know about everybody else, I'm sick and tired of other towns surrounding us that have development coming up like Harrison, and even in Newark, there's like neighborhoods that are starting to come up, they look better with buildings like that, that building looks beautiful. I grew up actually at 132 Washington Avenue, I wish I had that building up the next block to shop at some of those stores or whatever it is in the area, and, yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Sick of the Renaissance that's going on in the other, you have to be blind not to see it, you have to be blind not to see what's going on in the surrounding towns, and you have people fighting for, you know, talking about projects that didn't go through 12 and 20 years ago, yeah, it's an empty lot, and so, you know, I want to see a building there.
Angela Lucas, 731 Belville Avenue. We have, we're in a condo, we're paying the same taxes as some homes around us, for basically four rooms, no property, no, nothing. And you keep telling us, we got raised $1,000. That's a lot of money for a senior citizen. I'm 86 years old. You have social security, that makes a big difference. And we have nothing. What are you offering us for the raise in our taxes? We have no shopping, there's no big deal recreation, we don't do anything. There's nothing in the town. And Washington Avenue is shot compared to what it was.
Which is exactly why we're making these proposals.
I'm not interested in that right now, I'm interested in the little guy. The little guy that's a senior and struggling with everything going up but the income. $1,000 is a big raise for a four-room condo, and we're paying the same, I don't see where you can compare a condominium with a home, where you have a yard and a driveway and all the accoutrements of a beautiful home. We have an apartment, basically, and $1,000 is a big raise. That last payment we made in August took up 95% of my income. And you tell us in your missile that you've sent us to our homes, oh, it's going to raise the value of your home. Who's going to buy them? Who's going to buy that with the taxes in this little town of three miles square? And with nothing to offer the citizens? And as a senior citizen, I'm paying for the education, too. I've got great kids that are too old to go to school here. And I don't think it's fair. I don't know how anybody else is doing. It's the little guy that's hurting, not the big industries.
We're out of the town, we're in the town, we're in the town. We're still in the public, we have a motion to close and move the file out. Put the call roll.
Councilmember Clausureally?
Yes.
Depeny? Just wanted to say something before I vote. I appreciate everyone coming out and just sharing your concerns with us, because it is important for us to get your insight. Excuse me. I did want to clarify, when some of you say that, you know, you're putting all of this in the back of the taxpayers, not all of us up here are taxpayers. I am a mother, I have two children, two school-aged children who do not attend the public schools, and I do pay taxes. So when we vote, one way or another, we are not putting this on anyone else but all of us, because we're our one community, and it's important for us that this community moves forward in order for the big picture to become a reality, where we actually can offer better services, as some of you have asked, where we understand what it's like to pay high taxes. Some of these deals were done before we came here, and that's where the high taxes come from, but we cannot move forward, we cannot bring development unless we attract higher income earners, unless we attract, we sometimes have to make some decisions that you might not understand fully, and I just wanted to clarify that we are all taxpayers here. This is not putting it on anyone, so my vote is yes.
Quasiano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
I have a statement to make, too. I'm 100% for responsible redevelopment, however, not at the expense of our property owners and residents who live in this town, who can't afford to eat, can't afford to pay their taxes. I have one family home on a lot, 25 by 100. Do you know what my taxes went up? $700, okay? We all have to pay our fair share. And the reason why some people are moving, somebody said in the back, something about moving to Bielanti, that's because Bielanti wanted to move there to get to Cedar Grove to get out of the town. And at the end, may I, may I, wait, may I finish, please? Okay? I listened to all of this before, when you were all whispering and doing all this, there's no respect whatsoever at this meeting, I'm sorry. We all have to pay our fair vote. If it was a five pilot program, five year, fine, but my vote for a 25-year pilot is definitely, definitely no. And I think we need more respect in the audience for some people. I think everyone should be able to say what they want without booing or hissing or doing that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Counselor.
And I don't, I really don't, you know, care about anything else. Respect.
So, Councilwoman, do you want to explain why you voted?
Pass what?
Councilwoman, do you want to explain why you voted for pilots previously?
I voted, the last pilot, the one I did not vote for. I voted, the last pilot, the one I did not vote for, Mr. Mayor. And don't try to go over my head like you always do. This is my statement and that's all I am going to say.
You have supported pilots in that.
No comment.
You supported the Soho project.
No comment.
That wasn't anywhere near election. Being an African, anybody else?
We just went all the time.
Tommy vote?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Orders is approved.
Thank you.
Orders number three, public hearing, ordinance amended, orders number three, five, four, five. Finally adopted by the township council.
We are still in a public meeting. If you wanna talk, I'm gonna need you to take it outside.
Of the township of Bellevue, New Jersey, on September 10, 2019, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Guarantee by the Township of Bellevue, New Jersey, Were Payment of Principal Interest on the Capital Premise, Threatening Bonds, Series 2019, Bellevue Board of Education Project."
Motion to open for a public hearing.
Motion made second, court call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Joe, you have a handle?
You mean I'm first for change? Wow. Thank you. Yeah, I'm not gonna go back into this pilot program. Let me ask you one thing. You can't. We're only in the third... Oh, I'm sorry, my mistake. Somebody interrupted me and I didn't hear you. You were first.
Motion, Mr. Frank Anton.
Once again, I'm sorry Mr. Banker left because I'm opposed to getting involved in anything with the ECIA improvement authority. He was the director of it, they've had many problems. I told you before, they lost a $10 million building. Me, you, everybody in this town and the county is paying for that failed Bears Stadium that went through the ECIA. So do not get involved in the ECIA. If the Board of Education wants to do this four, five million dollar project, let them be honest. And let them go to the voters and put it on the ballot, like you said, 1,700 people voted for that $49 billion bond. Using the ECIA is a way to go around the taxpayers, we have no say on it. U7 and the Board of Education are putting us in hot without our input on this. And put it on the ballot. They got legitimate reason for that four or five million? Put it on the ballot and let us vote on it. So I hope you both know on this one also.
Anybody else? Joe?
Michael Sheldon, 47 Flay Street. I want to thank you in advance, hopefully you're going to support this ordinance. Yes, it's a $3.5 million loan from the ECIA. But in the opinion of many of us, this is going to bring about an extremely important, valuable athletic resource to the township. Most of the money's gonna be used to transform Clermont Field into a state of the art.
I thought that was already done.
Well, you're voting tonight to serve as the guarantee for the loan, on the off chance, the hypothetical chance that the board couldn't pay?
I'm just confused, because I'm almost positive this week I received campaign literature stating that this was already a done deal, it was gonna be built in early spring.
That's news to me, because I don't know what you're talking about there.
So this is part of that, that's not a...
It has been announced already at board meetings that the district, because Clermont Field does belong to the Board of Education, that we would like to turn Clermont Field into a multipurpose turf field, which would also include renovated bathrooms, a team room, and...
So a statement that I saw that guaranteed this would be built in spring would not accurate? The public's not even in place yet.
My understanding is they hopefully expect, we have our, one of our engineering firms, Boswell Engineering, finishing up the plans for it. And as soon as that happens, provided you approve this, then I...
But there's probably no funding. If there was no funding, it wouldn't get built.
No, but it provided you to support this. And the plans are underway right now by Boswell. And then as soon as your end is in place and Boswell finishes their plans, this will be going out to bid. It could be the case that before this year is out, we'll have awarded a bid for the project.
As long as this gets approved.
As long as it gets approved. But I'm hoping you do, this is one of the instances where I support the council's endorsement of something the Board of Education is doing. I think this is going to be a win-win for the community. And as our business administrator, Dr. Tomko, explained at the previous board meeting, they believe that they will be able to handle the financing for this internally without having to raise the local school tax levy a penny to cover the payment of the ECIA.
That levy's already there though. I mean, that levy's already been levied. It recurs every year, so you're paying out of continuing levy.
If this matter goes through, we get the $3.5 million from the ECIA, the first payment, my understanding, if I remember correctly, the first payment doesn't happen until the year 2021. It's during the 2021 school year that the first payment is made for this loan. So there is, and at that time, Dr. Tomko and Mr. Palladino have made it clear to the public that they believe they'll be able to deal with the finances internally without imposing any additional tax levy on residents. So we may be able to accomplish this project. My understanding is that the ECIA is lending us this money for something between 1% and 1.25%. So it's almost a zero-interest loan, which this is a rarity in matters like this. So I think this is a great thing for the whole community. It will also give our township an important athletic resource, which will have the collateral benefit of improving property tax values, making the community more attractive to want to raise a family.
Anybody else? Motion closed.
Motion closed, move to final adoption.
Second?
Motion made second, close, move to final adoption, court call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Orders is approved. Orders number four, for public hearing, bond orders re-appropriating $140,000. Proceeds not needed for their original purpose, and orders provide for the acquisition of a front-end loader in and by the township of Bellevue, the county invests in New Jersey.
Motion to open for a public hearing.
Second?
Motion made second, court call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Frank Anton?
I'm sorry, is this the ordinance?
Yes.
The 140, I just wanna know what I would not need, where did the $140,000 come from?
Start on?
Previous year bond.
For what purpose?
The previous bond was for, specifically said for public works equipped.
From public works bond?
Yes.
We be able to get the number of the offer request?
It was at least $140,000 that was left over.
Yes.
Anybody else? Well, if this was for public, Jerry Delvertoy wrote this. If this was for public work equipment, isn't the front-end loader for public works also?
Yeah.
So why did it need to be amended? This is original ordinance, it's being amended.
Because we had to, bond council asked us to do it to specifically identify the piece of...
Well, what was specifically listed before?
It was project in general, it spoke, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You know better than I do. So the previous bond, there was money left in a previous bond that included kept public works equipment, but it didn't actually specifically identify the added up purchase.
What was the original bond for? How much?
It's in excess of, I would be guessing, but it was in excess of $150,000.
$150,000, okay, thank you. Motion closed.
Motion closed, move to final adoption.
Motion closed, move to final adoption.
Second?
Motion made second, court call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Orders is approved.
Motion to open for a public comment?
Second?
Motion made second, move to a public comment, court call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
125 Bell Street. On this communication, I would hope that it would be corrected. This is letter received from the mayor appointing. First of all, under council manager form of government, a manager's appointment. As I sat on the council between 1990 and 2000, served as mayor, whenever we made OEM appointments, they were strictly made by the manager. So I would hope you, council, would pass a resolution and have to put the manager's name on your appointment to make it official. You think we could do that?
I don't believe they're going to. The statute says...
No, no, no.
The statute clearly says the mayor appoints.
No, it's not your appoint. What do you do, make your own statue?
No, time out.
You want a statue?
Time out, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna read it for you, okay? No, no, I don't want you to...
No, I don't wanna argue with you either, but...
I'm not gonna argue, I'm gonna read the statute. NJ...
Go ahead, read it to me.
Statue...
I might have missed something, and I'm wronged.
Statue at... A, nine, dash, forty point one. Anybody who wants to do that, feel free to do it along with me. Let's read it here. Forgive me, but...
Just make sure it sounds like council manager, not mayor council.
So in every... Don't trust me, I guarantee you. Google this yourself.
I will, I will, let me Google it, you're right.
NJ statue...
Hold on, NJ...
All right. NJ statue at APP.
APP.
A dash, a colon, I'm sorry, A colon, nine, dash, forty point one. It's right in the letter, so I'm sure you go for the letter right there.
Okay.
So I'm gonna read it, in every municipality in this state, the mayor, or in the case of a municipality that's adopted the commission form of government pursuant to provision... Mayor makes the appointment.
You know, I'm gonna...
Don't trust me, I'm gonna read it, trust the state statute, trust the state legislature, Google it yourself.
I will read it.
Mayor all appointment, thank you.
Okay, but I'm not done.
And actually, just to put an exclamation point on this, do we have a legal opinion on this?
No, no. In this case, it is absolutely the mayor's. I don't ever recall being in, you've served on the council.
You did it wrong.
That doesn't mean... No, I'm just wondering when the council manager form of government changed. I'm just a little furious about that. But anyway, let's forget about that. You made a statement about the Walter Kitty project, which I'm glad is finally going on, because I think everybody's talked about it who's been in office. But you made a statement at a town meeting a month ago, which is 20 to 30 years before anybody did something with it. And then you say 20 years. 20 years ago, you were on the council, you inherited that project.
But maybe for 20 years?
Please include yourself with the project. But I just wanna give you a little history on it, maybe you're not aware of it. You make it sound like no other governing bodies ever made an attempt to do that project.
Nobody ever got it done, this council got it done.
Let me finish. Here we go again, let me finish. I'm just trying to tell you what happened. During my term, we made every attempt, the problem we had with that...
We didn't get it done, Mario, it's clear.
I have five minutes, don't interrupt my five minutes. We made every attempt to revitalize that property. Township of Bellevue could never get, that property could never get a remediation plan. Back in 1988, 1999, Paul D. Guy Tannell helped us get the state to put somebody on there to remediate the property. After I left, we left the plan called Bellevue 2000, was to address that property. You took over, everybody took over, John, everybody, nobody ever did anything about it. The organic, inorganic property, that was again with the help of Paul D. Guy Tannell. He put that on the tax roll, forgave the liens that were against it, and that's how that property came around.
So don't think... Forgave the liens, that sounds like some kind of an abatement that actually spurred it to get on the growth.
So basically what happened there, you keep saying governing, but people made an attempt, it was almost there. You took over in 2000, and in 2002, they tried to recall you and throw you out of office. And then we didn't run again after four years.
Guess what, I'm here.
Yeah. And I have another question to ask you. What was so funny, what was so funny a month ago, I didn't make the last town meeting, when Councilwoman Burke voted no for the budget? You were laughing, why were you laughing at her?
I'm so glad you asked this question. Because Councilwoman Burke, for nine and a half months, voted for a temporary budget. She voted for every single appropriation for nine and a half months, which funded the government. With two and a half months left, we have the budget. She voted for every single labor contract, she voted for every single...
Change, that's not what I said. What was so funny?
That was funny.
What was funny? Laughing, how would you like somebody laugh at that behind your back?
Why don't we get back to this now that you said it on the tape, mayor, and I didn't wanna bring it up. You said it on the tape.
And we can tell her at the Ford Festival.
I'm only worried about the residents in this town. So, that's it. You don't have to do, Mary, you don't have to do anything.
The question was geared to me. The question was geared to me. Why it was so funny? I found it funny because for nine and a half months, she voted for every single temporary budget.
So that's funny?
And with only two and a half months left, people go, no.
Can't speak their mind, change their opinion?
Why you vote the way I want? This is the United States, we don't have...
I mean, it's like Korea?
He's only asking me why I thought it was funny. That's why.
You know what, Marie, let's forget about it, let's forget it.
He goes over your head, he's...
You know what he just told me? Marie, nobody just told me, it must be related to Donald Trump, do anything you want.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You are unbelievable. I've never met anyone like you. I hope you don't treat your mother the way you treat me.
Councilwoman Burke, could you stay there one minute, please?
No, 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 Mr. Frank Anton, you're gonna address the chair.
First of all, when she voted on those temporary budgets, weren't those temporary budget votes on the 2018 budget? Yes, they are.
We're in 2019.
No, no, when you were voting on the temporary budgets, those temporary, you have to vote ones beginning in years, the first three months. That's based on the prior year's budget.
Those are.
Exactly, so that's what you vote on.
June, July, August, September, October, all temporary budgets voted.
So what you was voting on was the prior year's budget.
No.
All right, look, you're gonna argue, you know, you're...
You know what, you're not gonna win, so you're only wasting your time.
And again, I don't know if you agree with her, but I'm sure she was right. Secondly, the, I don't understand, you made a statement in writing on your website and all, the Walter Kitty site was vacant for 40 years. False, it was a tired distribution center.
I probably said 20, 20-ish, I think I said.
No, it wasn't. And then, the reason it was empty, it wasn't vacant and abandoned, they were doing the cleanup. And some of the cleanups, when they cleaned up certain segments, so that...
Motion here, council.
When they clean up segments, like I've had customers own gas stations and all, they did their job. Kation Point, Franklin Street, and Belmont Avenue. They did their job. They had an excavator take all the dirt. That dirt, I don't know if you remember, that dirt stood on that property for a year and a half. You know why it stood there? Because the DEP was backed up, they couldn't do inspections. It wasn't because the owner didn't wanna do the cleanup. Same thing happened. So it wasn't vacant for 40 years, like you said. You put these things out, and then your better Bellevue crew, who you've given quite a few of them jobs already, come here and all. And finally, what I wanna say, you know, I'm in this town 51 years, my grandfather goes back, you know, 19, 20, owned the property with chandeliers on it, my family goes back a long time in Bellevue, I love it. These comments about the disgusting condition of Washington Avenue is absolutely untrue. There's no restaurants, there's no restaurants, not just in Columbia, just did a major renovation on the front of it. You got, what is it, I don't know if I pronounced it correctly, El Menin Quedo over there. You've got every ethnic restaurant on this avenue. You don't have one restaurant, you've got tons of them.
I've never said one restaurant.
I'm talking about the people who spoke up earlier. You never let anybody finish, you interrupt their five minutes. You have a serious problem. You can't listen because you refuse to listen, because you gotta get your message out, and a lot of times it's false.
With somebody else said, it's just not rational.
Right, like anybody else spoke. Could you please shut out the letter speaker for about five minutes?
I'm not gonna do that.
No? Because you can't. Because it's in your nature, you can't do that. You can't accept other people's opinions.
Oh, I love how you do the Frankton, Tony.
I absolutely love it. Tell me when your five, tell me when your five minutes is up, I can speak.
You're at three, you got two more, you have two more.
Yeah, all right? So, we have every kind of business on this avenue. We don't have any vacant properties, except that vacant property, right now, right up the block, half a block up from the middle school, they're building apartments over retail on, that was approved by the zoning board. We've got, McDonald's is doing some renovations. We've got, there's no empty properties, and they're all good. It's all good, there's all kinds of services you want around the gym.
I've never said that Washington Avenue, you're arguing with me about it.
Because, you know...
I don't know why you're arguing with me or...
My parents spoke something, all right? Don't put your mouth in here until your brain's in, in action, all right? So, if you would listen. So, I can't, this is, these people, when they speak like this, they denigrate our town. We've got a beautiful Washington Avenue. All right?
I would not, but that far, but in my opinion.
Well, where's all the vacancies?
I never said it's vacant, actually. But there are a lot of storefronts that are vacant, I can show you that.
Where?
Walgreens, how about Walgreens?
Well, that, but they just moved out, but they got, they built a new one.
How about the building right next door to Walgreens? Vacant. How about where the old bar, the old bar was on the other side of Breilack Avenue? What was it called?
The old bar.
Julies, how about Julies? Tulock's right there, vacant, how about that?
No, they got...
How about, how about the motorcycle mall? Still vacant.
What, what are you talking about, the motorcycle mall?
They never been locked, was there?
They got approval. They got approval to build there.
It's vacant?
Well, that, it's not vacant.
Just run a little...
I mean, you're a class, you are destroying Belleville.
That's... Your time is up, Frankton, Tony.
With your ego, is destroying Belleville, but let me tell you, your day will come.
You destroyed Belleville for the last ten years, sir. You destroyed Belleville.
Their will come. And the people, you don't understand, the problem is not more development, the problem is decreased spending.
Yeah, your time is up, Frankton, Tony.
You increase the mayor's budget, other expenses from nine, four hundred to a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and I open the thing, there's some crazy things in that hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
We'll discuss it next meeting, your time is up for now.
And we're finding it out there.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Michael Sheldon, forty-seven, Flats Street. Before Councilwoman Burke, I just want to...
Wait, I'm sorry, Michael, one second. Yeah, I'm not, I'm confused what's going on. Is Councilwoman Burke seated, not seated, or you're gonna...
Can I stand and, and, because I'm a little nervous?
Sure, absolutely, no problem. She's still part of this meeting, I'm gonna record her.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Before Councilwoman Burke does leave, I just want to say, I want to thank her for being truly an advocate for all of the existing residents of Belleville. The next election's only two hundred and three days away. You have my support and hope for everyone who follows suit. I regret that I don't live in the first ward. You have made comments tonight, and in the letter you enclosed in the property tax bills, that we can all take comfort in property values are up. The numbers may reflect it, but are you basing that on the reassessment values? Because every home automatically got, you know, a forty thousand dollar, dollar kick. So, your, your, the, the improvement is basically just the artifice to readjust the tax...
And now answer your own question. My answer is no, it's not based upon solely on that reinvestment of forty thousand dollars. In, in Rutan Estates, there was a household a few months ago that set a record. Four hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah, I know your home, I know you sold your home.
And that's not based on reassessment.
I know you sold your home for four hundred thousand plus.
Four hundred and seventy-one, fifty-one thousand RAS, and that's not based on reassessment.
There's a certain benefit when, you know, when your mayor...
Are you making an accusation, Mr. Sheldon?
No, but I'm just saying that, that...
No, you are. What was the accusation you want to make?
I'm, I'm gonna pursue that now.
What is the benefit of that, Mayor?
But let me, let me just point out, perhaps you didn't see the recent article from Forbes, I think it was also printed in the Wall Street Journal, that because of the economic, or the tax policies affected by Washington, the current occupant of the Oval Office, that Essex County saw the largest property value drop in the, in the last year. That on average, the property values are down eleven percent in, in Essex County because of Washington's tax policy.
That our property values are way up.
Well, well, let's, let's have a chance, I'd love to meet with you, we'll compare and contrast, what you say is the truth and what Forbes says is the truth.
I have the justice in Belleville.
You keep, uh, tonight, you've mentioned again, and I've had to set the record straight on a couple of previous occasions, the number of children that came out of Essex Park during the last academic year. Yes, nineteen children were in grades through K through twelve, but...
So, what are you setting straight? That's what I said, nineteen.
You fail to, and I pointed this out previously, you don't include the children from Essex Park that were pre-K. There were another seven, which brings the twelfth to twenty-sixth.
The last time you brought this up, you actually admitted that it went down from nineteen. The last time you brought this up?
No, I, I know, I acknowledge that it was nineteen. You had even, I think you had, well, I'll go back to the tape, if you want, we'll either do this on Facebook or at the next meeting. But I just wanted to set the record straight, that for the previous academic year, nineteen kids from Essex Park in grades K through twelve, seven that were pre-K. So, the total for the previous academic year was twenty-six.
And they pay sixty thousand per student, when you actually break it down? Well, I'll ask you the same question as your last time, would you rather just the fifteen thousand dollars per student, or would you rather get all the windfall of taxes that were taken?
It's not appropriate to, to go into that complicated question here, since I only have five minutes.
I just wanted to...
You pointed out again, the referendum. You keep dragging this, dragging this up. The average, the, the tax levy for the median assessed home for the referendum is just over a hundred and fifty dollars, it's not two hundred dollars, as you pointed...
That was a hundred and sixty based on the old assessment, based on the new assessment.
No, no, as soon as the assessments took, took place, I, as Chair of the Finance Committee, I make sure that Dr. Tomko, Mr. Palladino, and our bond counsel readjusted the, the amortization schedule so that no one would bear a, a net increase. It was readjusted so that now the hundred and fifty dollar referendum fee is based on an assessed value of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. It was a hundred and fifty dollars last year, when the median assessed value was two thirty-eight. So, e- everything has been properly translated, so that there's been no net increase. So, please stop saying two hundred dollars, it was, it's a hundred and fifty. You also are very disparaging to the hundred, almost eighteen hundred people who voted for the referendum in November two thousand seventeen.
I never give my opinion, I merely say that nearly seventeen hundred people voted.
The tone of your voice clearly makes it, and you keep bringing this up in any of the press releases, that essentially that a, a small but active minority brought about...
Seventeen hundred people isn't a small active minority.
Right, and how many people voted for you for mayor?
About eighteen hundred.
Yeah, so about the same. So, in that case, it's a mob, but in your case, it's a mandate.
I never said, I never said it was a mob, but big difference between a, in November election and a May election with three candidates.
In one case, when it's not expedient to your political ambitions, it's a mob, but when it's your, they're endorsing you, you have a, a godsend mandate.
Your time is almost up, let me show you the...
Yeah, well, you, you interrupted me a couple, I have two more, two more things. The filter situation for Belleville, if it is, and you kind of hinted, you said you would be more, have more information hopefully later this week. If filters are coming from government channels, it is not appropriate, in my opinion, for you to be soliciting contact information from a private personal website. That filters for Belleville website is something you own, it's not a township site. If the town, if the, if the municipal government, don't smirk at me.
Unbelievable, unbelievable. And if the town, if the town paid money to build the website, you'd be saying, why did you spend town money to build the website?
Yeah, you want to go down his site, so you spent eighteen dollars for a domain and fifty dollars for hosting.
No, I can tell why you're not a professional web person, not a good artist.
Well, I, I admit that I'm not, and I, I would love to sit down someday and know how much you know about coding yourself, because I doubt, given you a week, you probably could spit out the PHP code for Hello World.
I don't mean to.
Lastly, lastly, I want to ask a question about Mr. Banker, who conveniently left a few moments ago. He's hired as a consultant for the township, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, all right. His wife is also on payroll. Is she a new hire, or has she been on the payroll for an extended period of time?
She's been on the payroll for, I, I believe she's on the payroll for a extended period of time.
All right, I, um...
I do these to wrap up. I'll do away with it.
In some recent local newspaper articles, Mr. Banker recently announced, because he's the man, essentially the manager, the administrator for Caldwell, he announced that Caldwell is just hiring a new company to do their website, and I believe the amount quoted was fifty thousand dollars. Anything to do with Alpha Dog?
No.
All right, I just want to make sure you're on record saying that the Caldwell website is nothing to do with Alpha Dog, or any subsidiary is...
I wish it was mine.
Oh, one, one very last question.
You're way out of time, Sheldon.
No, you, you interrupt, I just, thirty, twenty-three seconds. Are there any, are there any township employees other than yourself who are also employed by Alpha Dog? This should be a simple question, you have four or five people working for Alpha Dog. Are any of them also working as for the Town Hall?
No. Another conspiracy here that we've...
It's not a conspiracy, I just wanted, I, I, the, the question we've been asking...
So, now we've acknowledged that my company did not get hired in Caldwell, and we've acknowledged that I don't have an employee that's a town.
These are just simple questions, because Belleville, Belleville abounds in rumors, certain things have been asked of me, so I wanted to ask, ask the source in this case, so you could dispel any rumors from spreading like that.
Question, answer, answer, thank you.
Thank you, that's all I want.
You will? No.
Is this public, um...
Yeah, you can do it now. And I haven't, I've been waiting for you all day. I have the answers for you.
I, I'm gonna change just, my name is Sacani Valisi Rodriguez, one forty-eight North Avenue. I'm gonna change the subject, um, two things. Real quick, regarding the filters, last meeting, you did kind of promise my building, ten-unit family filters.
Yep.
We haven't received them, we didn't get any calls. I did call Ms. Burke, Councilwoman Ms. Burke, she did help me, um, I got a phone call the next day regarding inspection, I needed to get some kind of inspection done.
So, I'll, I'll short circuit the whole thing. We actually had, we didn't have your information, the gentleman that's not here, I believe the building owner, even though he called my office...
That's my father.
Okay. Even though he called the office a couple of times, as you probably know, he calls him a private number, and he's never, ever left his, his phone number. So, you were unable to contact him, unfortunately. But, that said, a ten-unit building, I don't know if Councilwoman Burke advised you of this, a ten-unit building does not have a lead service line. Therefore, even though you were maybe incorrectly advised in talking to NORC or having NORC come inspect it, NORC will not give you a filter, because a ten-unit building does not have a lead service line.
Okay, but I... Didn't I tell you that somebody was gonna come to your building, correct?
Yeah, yeah, she did. I actually have a letter from Belleville, saying that our water is contaminated, that it is bad.
It, yeah, it, it might, that letter's not, and I apologize, that letter's not specific to every single household, so for instance, I know this is probably your second meeting here, the only houses in Belleville that have a lead service line are usually one and two families, maybe some threes. Anybody that lives in a big apartment building, anybody that's been in a, in a resident, maybe in Rutan Estates, built it, but not, but, everybody that lives in Rutan Estates, everybody lives in private, there's no way to separate who gets the letters, we have to notice the entire town.
So, our area is, okay, you're saying?
So, you are in a unique situation, one year in Silver Lake, where you're on NORC's infrastructure, but because you are a ten-unit building, you do not have a lead residential service line.
May I say something?
Sure.
Yeah, because Mr. Bosomo got the water department to tell, I get, I don't know if you ever got the, the, the message, though.
He did call me on Friday.
Oh, okay.
Um, it was, I was still at work, I was still busy, I couldn't make it back in time for inspection.
And he said the same thing, your, your building is clear on that, on the lead problem.
Okay, he just said he would come and inspect.
Yes, Stephanie, I just wanted to get that in.
Thank you. Now, Rob...
Number two, we got your second one already resolved.
Okay.
I think. We have the chief here, we have done a lot of work in the last two weeks, and you guys, you guys were last here.
Because I still have more pictures of them not open eighty percent of this whole week.
Terrible, I saw it too.
So, I don't know, I, I understand that, your second meeting, and you don't maybe follow, because you don't have all the ordinances and stuff that we have, but the vote that we took today, ordinance on first reading, was actually to rescind that parking spot. That was a vote, so as you look at your, if you have a gentleman...
No, honestly, I don't know how we get those papers, we come in and we never have, are able to get one.
Put it here, right there.
Thank you.
So, that, we, we took a vote today on first, the police department and the chief can speak to this, did a little bit of investigation, they talked to the planning board, we got a copy of the approvals.
Zoning board.
Zoning board apologies.
They're in violation, they're in violation of the memorialization of the zoning board.
So, we, we voted today to, to take the first step, to rescind it. Unfortunately, I'll tell you, because you're not always here, the process is a two-meeting process, and we skip one between and then wait twenty days.
I'll, I'll be here, now I know they come.
Yeah, it is in the works, we have met on it, we've discussed it, we've, we've investigated, we've, we've actually done a lot.
Jerry, you gonna call it up again?
I will.
Who was the one that uncovered it? Mr. Don Gershio uncovered it.
Oh, we thank you for bringing this talk up, you know.
Thank you, I appreciate you finally addressing something that...
And I'm glad, and when a resident shows up and we actually can address it by the next word, begin the process of discussion.
So, it, just to clarify, we're still unable to park there, though, because of those signs there.
Until that sign comes down, and just, please don't, I mean, yeah, all right.
Okay, I get it, but I will be here in two weeks.
But we wouldn't have known that without you and, and everybody else.
Yeah, my other tenants couldn't make it, but we're following up.
Well, you could, you could be the bearer of good news.
Great, I think, thank you so much, something good out of the meeting, thank you.
Yes, Jerry Don Gershio, eight groups green, I'm, I'm glad this all came up, and I want to clarify it. We looked into it, and he was approved from nine in the morning to six P M. And nine in the morning to twelve noon on Saturday, no Sunday. Sunday was never allowed. And I went by there a couple of times, and it's open at ten o'clock, it's open at midnight, it was ridiculous.
Yes.
And I made, I said something to Mr. Di Lorenzo, I said, he's in total violation, he said he called them and told them they had to stop staying open past six P M. Now, my question is, my follow-up question is, what is the new sign gonna say? I doubt there's gonna, I don't know, I want to speak for the council. Well, I suggest... I doubt there's gonna be one, Jerry.
Thank you.
If there is a sign, I suggest it should only be from three to six P M, Monday to Friday. That's the most it should be approved.
That, that would be approved, you, you have a chance to speak on that, if you ever see that on the agenda.
I will be here.
I mean, if you have a problem with that, it's another story, but that's all I would I mean, if you have a problem with that, it's another story, but that's all I would suggest. Three in the afternoon to six P M, after six P M, anybody could park there. On the weekends, anybody could park there at any time. Even the nine to twelve, they don't need it that early in the morning. Um, the other thing I was going to say was I had a question from, concerning the budget, which I forgot, the night of the budget, but because they said the town budget went up six million dollars, of which most of it had to do with revenue received through anticipated revenue. Am I correct? I don't know how much it was, two or three million dollars?
Yeah.
My question is, how much of that anticipated revenue has been realized by the town already? Since we're already in the tenth month and there's only two months left?
Well, the budget was passed only a couple of weeks ago, so.
Yes, the anticipated revenue goes all the way back to January.
But we would have had it in there already if it was in. So anticipated meaning it was going to be September through December would be the anticipation part.
In those couple of months, you're going to get all that money?
Well, we would have had it in there as revenue when we passed the budget in September, it was already in. So I'm just trying to clarify, it's only through September to December. So we have a, one of the big redevelopment projects is a million dollars in permit fees.
That's okay, I'm just asking. Now, what happens if we don't realize that amount of money of the anticipated revenue? What happens then?
Good question, Mr. Iacona.
Just like any other anticipated revenue that, that whether it's fees and fines in the court, whether it's construction permits and the construction department, if we don't beat our revenue, it's a shortfall. And then we have to make it up either in the following year or in other places.
So you would, yeah, so you would say there would be a shortfall that would carry over to the next year then?
And that just makes.
Would it be, would it be absorbed by any surplus? Because you have surplus in the, in the budget total.
Again, it's a, it's a, that's a certainly a budgetary tool that we would address at the end of the year.
Okay. Last thing I want to mention, and since this came up, my, our mayor, mayor, is, uh, you mentioned because of the ten-story, the ten-apartment building, that it doesn't have a lead line. I believe it depends on when the building was built.
No, so in a, in a one or two family house, it does.
Yes.
In my opinion, that I've been engrossed in this for the past six months or so, a lead, a lead service line is only one inch, is only one inch. It would not be able to support the amount of pressure or the amount of flow needed for anything beyond a three-family.
Well, I hate to say this, but I come from Newark, where we had multiple apartment buildings that my parents own. And I was very much involved as a kid. And I could tell you, we're talking about sixteen-unit apartment buildings. And they all had lead lines coming in, but they were all built around nineteen hundred and all over there. So I think it has to do with when the property was built. And that's all I could say. The, the way to resolve this, very simple, where you go, where your meter is, not after it comes into the building from the meter, before the meter, which is the pipe coming in from outside, all you have to do is scratch it and you can tell right off.
That's exactly what the guy had told me, that he had to come.
That's the one I, yes, that's the one I said.
We're not, but, but, I, I will make sure we get all your information and we'll follow up on that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Better be safe than sorry. Anybody else? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ma'am. I'm sorry, ma'am, you got, you want to come forward?
Warren Palbo, seven thirty-one Bellville Avenue, three one hundred. I have residents wondering, um, for the past month, we, we get twice a week garbage pickup, and we haven't been getting that, so I call all the time, you know, I call your office, I call, I call anybody. And it's, it's one week we got one pickup, the following week another one pickup, and then I call the office. This is like a constant, it goes and.
Now, you should question, do you have municipal pickup or do you contract out your own garbage?
No, we have it from the town.
Okay.
And then it, for like a month it happens, and then it'll come back to normal. And then we go sporadic and we don't get garbage pickup.
I see the township manager writing, our superintendent DPW is also here. We will, we'll find out.
Okay, and another question, residents were wondering, we got a thousand dollar tax increase. And they were wondering like how do you decide condo versus a house, like, um, Councilwoman, it's seven hundred. Some people I know around the corner who got nothing, some got two hundred, and we're only four rooms. And people are wondering, why did we get a thousand dollars?
So your, your quarterly tax bill's a thousand dollars more than the previous quarter?
Yeah, it went up a thousand.
And, yeah, I mean, this is, this is two hundred and fifty dollars?
Well, it's like, yeah.
Yeah, so that if you read my tax letter, I, I make it very clear that you should not do that. You cannot take your increase in this quarter and multiply it times four. So in the tax bill, I actually wrote a letter, and I tried to explain that to residents. And I think that maybe the woman that was also here talking about a thousand dollar tax, I'm always suspicious because the tax increase was about a hundred and fifty dollars on the average assessed house. So it might be a little more if your house is worth more, not a thousand dollars though. So do not take your increase, say it was a hundred and eighty or a hundred and ninety dollars, multiply it times four. Your, that's your, the increase you saw in that quarter is your increase for the year. It's not, you can't multiply it times four. So I hope that helps a little bit. But if you have any questions, ma'am, you could always, we, we can answer that. You can always come in and talk to our tax assessor, he'll explain it for you.
But we already got our new tax bills and the rule of a five hundred dollars quarterly, four to five hundred dollars quarterly.
Okay, but that quarterly increase, ma'am, is just for the entire year. It's still four hundred dollars, still seems like a lot?
It's a thousand dollars.
No, 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 you can't, you can't do that. You can't multiply your increase for the quarter and multiply it times four. It's not the way, but I would absolutely make sure that you come in and talk to our tax assessor to have him explain it to you.
I try to call, but they.
Mr. Iacona, ma'am, if you want to stick around before we end the meeting, Mr. Iacona will take you, we will get you a meeting with our tax assessor. Okay, so I, I want him to explain that to you and me if it, if it actually is.
And me too.
Anybody else?
I'm involved, I did have a question, you just said something about our, um, shoot, when, when we get our, our permits and stuff, right? You said how much we get from that, how much the town gets from our permits, makes on our permits, right? I understand that this town has the highest permits within significantly valuable room field. I've been doing a lot of work in different places, like could have a trust fund, some places. And some of the contractors are saying, oh, this is crazy, the other towns are lower than our town. So, so do you compare on what other towns pay in permits?
Yeah, I could tell you that electric and plumbing and stuff like that, it's all state statute. They, it depends on, on the cost of the, of the, of the improvement or the renovation that you're doing, they multiply it times local and state statute. That I can tell you for permits.
Okay, I haven't known it, okay. So, okay, if a person has a tree on their property, it's on their property, okay? Why do they have to pay a permit in front to get that too? Well, their property.
I, I totally agree with you, by the way. I agree.
I mean, is that something new?
No, it's been there for a long time. I'm totally against that, but I've been.
I mean, that, that's the person's property, they're aware of paying property taxes, why can't they take the tree down?
I am in agreement, I've asked that same question myself.
Well, are they going to fix it, not fix it?
I don't know, the they, the they would be, uh, uh, maybe an oversight committee to discuss construction. We're unable to get that done though.
Okay, and.
It's something I would like to look at.
All right, and another question from Miss Mupini is that I want to know, okay, down at that end of Washington Avenue, what is the crime rate? Like, is it higher, lower, in between? Or is it same?
Actually, I don't have the statistics in front of me. And, um, I will, I will tell you, uh, there, there might be shoplifting there. So that's if we get a shop right too, it may actually.
It's not just shoplifting though, it's, it's other things, it's people getting beat up at the bus station.
No, I don't know.
I'm, I'm going to, you know what I'm going to do, I'll have, I'll have the chief.
I'll fulfill those things for next year.
I'll have the chief pull it.
I mean, sometimes maybe people aren't important, but I do go to that, no, I'm just saying, okay? It's true, because you know why?
And again, how can I answer if you want?
Yeah, because there's, there's selling trucks down there, that's why.
I'm going to have, I'm going to ask, no, you're okay, I'm going to ask the chief to, to get those numbers.
All right.
That'll be one of the things, chief, we go over tomorrow when we do our.
Not a problem.
Motion to. Did I, I ended up with a wave ahead?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, sorry. Richard Dixon, not in a way to. Mr. Fleischer.
Frank Fleischer, eight thirty-three, Main Street. So Mr. Mayor, Mr. Frank Antoni had referenced an article that happened, that appeared, I guess in twenty seventeen, um, with a quote from you about, you know, you coming down on large-scale development. Are you challenging that quote? Do you think it's out of context? Do you remember, do you remember the interview when we asked that?
I totally agree with the interview. Anybody that knows me, that knew my campaign, that knew the campaign I ran, nobody would say that I was anti-development or I wasn't for development. Nobody. I was clear about that from day one. I advertised that, I campaigned on that, I talked about that, about how we need to redevelop this town to get additional railroads.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm not going to blame the reporter, but I've been interviewed a lot and, and often they get something not correct.
I was a community journalist many years ago, so I understand that happens sometimes. I did it, you know.
I even went as far to say I thought the eighty units was a poor design, meaning that it should be better designed and should be more units for that area.
Okay, so again, you take issue with the quote itself.
I do.
Okay. Um, obviously you feel very strongly about this because usually you don't bring out podium to come down and speak.
Actually, the second time I did it, last time I had a pilot, did the same exact thing.
I know, I know, I know. So I understand that this is something important to you, that you believe in that sort of thing. What I would say to you is that, and this is something, yeah, this is something that's important to me. There's a lot of, there's a lot of perspective or maybe a lot of misunderstanding that people like myself are against development. And it's not true, okay? I think that we disagree with maybe the scope of it, maybe the size of it, maybe even, as I said, the design of it. I don't particularly care for that building. Um, but there is a middle way, I would say, between no development and lots of development, you know, overdevelopment. And I think that's where a lot of, and I'm not going to speak for everybody, but speaking for myself, I believe that that's kind of where a lot of people who speak about this.
I'd love to see what that middle ground was.
What's that?
I, I haven't seen the middle ground, I'm not seeing what the view specifically, I'm saying just in general. I hear constantly at planning board meetings, everybody's against the project. Here, everybody's against the project, just a certain group of people. I've yet to see that middle ground and that element of people that are, seem to be against everything.
And that's fun, right. It could also be, you know, it could be open to interpretation, it may not be a settled.
The last time I was down here giving a pilot presentation was actually for a self-storage facility that had no kids, no impact in school district, and there was still opposition.
No, I can't, no, I totally, I totally understand. Um, what I also will say to you is that you said that statistics don't lie. Now, both you and I are educated men, okay?